I'd like to call the May nineteenth, two thousand fourteen Finance Committee meeting to order. Chair would entertain a motion for the consideration of claims.
Your Honor, I would move for the consideration of claims to be paid in the amount of six hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-two cents. Manual checks written in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars. A loan credit card payment in the amount of five thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. Checks written for payroll and liabilities for May first, two thousand fourteen, in the amount of five hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-one cents. For a total of one million, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty cents.
Yeah, will you second that?
I'd second that.
All right, any questions on the bills this time?
I'm looking for a question when I was going over it, and I'm trying to see where it was, there was. We can't find it, just...
Your Honor?
Yes.
Um, so, in looking through this, there was a, um, on page five of sixteen, on the hard copy, or page six of twenty-four, on the electronic copy. The Fremont County Public Health Vaccines, I was wondering what those were in relation to.
At the very top, eighteen, nine, four, four.
Yeah.
Anybody know?
Two hundred and eighty-eight dollars toward Fremont County Public Health.
Is that a...
Probably hepatitis.
Is that a staff, uh, deal?
We'll look it up here.
There's like, one for sixteen, one for sixty-four, one for sixteen, one for one-twenty-eight.
Yeah, it's hepatitis A and B series for people that work around, so we got airport weed and pest, sanitation, water, sewer, parks.
Okay. So that's a vaccination program that the city does outside of the healthcare we provide, or?
Or an in addition to.
Well, it's in addition to...
Does job requirement?
Yeah, to people that are around those type of things, or they can be exposed to it.
Okay.
It's probably cheaper by inoculation than hospitalization.
And is there a reason the first one was listed under two forty-one Tools and Supplies, and all the rest, the other four of them were listed under, uh, Safety Supplies? Is there a reason the ones different?
Your Honor, towards the end of the year, they, uh, we have employees that take from line items that don't make a lot of sense, because that's where the money is. Try to caution them, because that doesn't help us historically with the budget. So we'll, we'll send something out on that.
Other questions?
Last question is the, uh, the Ranger for thirteen, is that for application for a, a job, or advertising of a job?
What, where's that at?
Um, it's on page, I'm sorry, page nine of sixteen, and it's, um, item eighteen, eight, eight, eight.
Sorry, monthly.
It's on the bottom of the page, on page nine of sixteen.
Yeah, Your Honor, that's, uh, yeah, related to, um, three eighty-four is?
Three ninety-four is recruitment.
Okay, that's, so that is recruitment, the three ninety-four recruitment, the three ninety-ones would just be our standard publications we have to put in the paper, related to minutes and...
Okay. I'm done.
Any other questions?
Nope.
And the, and the only question I had, there were several, um, items, it seemed this time that were out of budget, that were larger numbers, and I just didn't know if we didn't have a summary on those, just because of time constraints and budget. Yeah, Your Honor, it was kind of both, it was, there were so many of them, and, uh, and there was some tying constraint with budget, but a lot of these, we looked at them overall, and there's not a particular department that's over expended completely, so... Okay. Not a huge concern, but, uh, at this time of the year, when we're six weeks to the end of the year, we see a lot of this. Okay. Any other questions?
Nope.
All right, all those in favor of the approval of claims say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Is there any other business for us today, Mr. Weaver? Really, we're just in the middle of the budget right now, or near the end of it, and at least from staff perspective, it'll just start for the council, and we'd so, next Tuesday, week from Tuesday, will be our budget work session, we'll be going over that, uh, not a whole lot of fluff to it, so it should go fairly smoothly, is what I anticipate, so...
One question, have we found that, any reversal to the past trend of collection of revenue from taxes? Has that reversed or changed any direction, or is it still appears to be a shortfall from previous years?
Previous years, yeah, sales tax particularly is what we've seen, um, decrease, or supplemental funding was a little bit less this year than last year, but in the two years, it's actually up. So, uh, but sales taxes are biggest one, the other ones, they fluctuate, if you look over the budget, some of them have increased by a little bit, some of them have decreased, but the sales tax is our biggest, um, decrease from what we had last year, what we budgeted last year.
Do we have any feel for where that, where, why that derives from? Do we know, like, what, like, I don't know if the state breaks it down into revenue sources further than what we do, or?
Well, Your Honor, I know on use tax, we've actually been, uh, those have always been better than what we expected, and so you have sales and use tax, those are different. Sales tax, um, I'm not sure why, I, I know in talking to Walmart some months ago, they had talked about they, they had seen a decrease, so people just...
It's just general...
Yeah.
Lack of spending, okay?
I don't know if Courtney has any other...
Well, we did think at the time when we were projecting, excuse me, Your Honor.
That's right.
We did think at the time when we were projecting that we would have a little bit of influx in our sales tax from the job corps. We're not really seeing that in sales tax, we're seeing it in use tax, but...
Hmm.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Right, meeting adjourned.
The May twenty, two thousand fourteen regular meeting of the Riverton City Council to order at seven P M. Uh, would Councilmember Fabian lead us in the plates, please?
Thank you, ma'am.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Rich Guard.
Here.
Councilwoman Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilwoman Mary Ellen Christensen.
Present.
Councilwoman Jonathan Fabian.
Here.
Councilwoman Kara Lyerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Todd Smith.
Here.
Mayor Ron Roverness.
And I am present, thank you. I declare that we have a quorum this evening. The chair would entertain a motion at this time for the approval of the agenda with the addition of tree board appointment to Agenda Item number thirteen.
Your Honor, I would move for approval of the agenda with the addition for the tree board appointment.
Second?
Been moved in second, is there a discussion? Your Honor? Yes, Councilman Guard. Do you want to table twelve this time?
Oh, Your Honor, that's up to you, you can either have a discussion and table it during the discussion, or table it...
Why don't we go ahead and have the discussion, I think it's worthwhile to have the discussion, so...
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor at this time, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Uh, communication from the floor, citizens' comments, anyone in the audience wishing to address the council regarding an item that is already on the agenda, will be given an opportunity to speak later on. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium and identify yourself for the record. Is there anyone that would like to address the council on an issue that's not on the agenda? Okay. Evening.
Evening, my name is Ryan Childers.
I'm Dana DeBries.
I'm Morgan Miller.
Okay.
And we will be giving a presentation about a multipurpose facility, uh, in place of Tonkin.
Say that again, please.
We will be giving a presentation about a multipurpose facility in place of Tonkin.
Okay.
Oh. All right, we would like to, I guess the word I could use is, propose that we put a multipurpose facility over the place of Tonkin, which is currently not being used for anything other than wrestling and trail racing practice. Uh, we did, we put out surveys at the one-eight-two-eight regional basketball game, and we did get some Fremont County surveys in there. Uh, most surveys that we did get were for aquatic centers, uh, racquetball, indoor track, climbing wall, gymnasiums, and basketball. Those were the major ones, we asked them to circle seven of the options here, and they did such. We also did out-of-county surveys to anyone who was willing, um, we got a handful, actually, uh, and we have quite different results. Racquetball was the top one, with the climbing wall coming next, aquatic center, gymnasiums, the indoor track, and the basketball still leading. The facility would stand where Tonkin School is currently, the property measures roughly eighty-seven thousand, one hundred and twenty square feet, and depending on what the public wants, we have a few different funding options, which include state funds or grants, a tax increase in community, a cent to two cents, probably, uh, city funding, and public donations, if there would be any. And those would be the projections of such, uh, funding options.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, is, is this mainly a recreation facility that you're thinking of, or a true multipurpose, uh, facility?
Uh, true multipurpose.
I see. Okay. Your Honor? Okay, yes, Councilman Guard. Are you thinking of salvaging what's there, or you're wanting to take down and replace what's there?
I think we could use the basis of Tonkin, but for the most part, we would need to, like, if it went through, it would need to be replaced in most parts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions? Okay. Okay, well, this is certainly something that our community could benefit from, I don't think any of us would argue that point. Figuring out how to pay for it is going to be a challenge, but, uh...
Yes, it is.
Most of these things are, but they have to start somewhere, and we really appreciate your taking the time and putting this together, and coming this evening, and it's not an easy project, uh, we agree, so...
Your Honor?
For your consideration.
Do you, do you know how many, uh, how many local respondents you actually had, like, did you, how many?
How many surveys?
Yeah, how many local surveys were filled out?
Not off the top of my head, no.
It wasn't terrible.
Was it, I mean, was, was it a lot, or was it not too many, or somewhere in between?
It was, uh, it was leaning more towards the not as many as we would hoped for.
Okay.
But it was definitely enough to conduct research from.
But then again, we'd only did it at the regional basketball tournament, so we really didn't spread it out to the community yet.
Are you hoping to do more?
Hopefully, yes.
Yeah, this is a point of interest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
In, in the past, there's been some, um, studies that have been done on this, and if you'd want to stop by my office sometime, why, I think I can get you a copy of that information, that would help, uh, they were surveys that were done in the community, uh, the potential amount of money that it could generate, what the cost would be, you know, a lot of good information, so, um, if you'd like, I'd be happy to get that with you.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
And thank you for your consideration.
Thanks, thank you. Thanks, guys. Thank you for your time this evening, we appreciate it.
Your Honor, I think we have another group.
Oh, we do have another group, all right. Wow.
Um, I'm Taylor Pasquet, and we're all from the RHS Leadership Class. Um, we're here to talk about a rec center as well.
Okay.
And I'm Macy Evans.
Can you state your name for the record, please, so that...
I'm Macy Evans.
Okay.
Caleb Bog.
Eric Horizon.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, we surveyed fifty people who don't live in the city of Riverton, and we surveyed fifty who do live here, um, half of which were from the rural areas, and half of them were people who live in town. Um, we use a survey method because we wanted to obtain opinions of people from varied locations, and not just in one area. Um, this is just, uh, showing what our, um, if this would, like, if our community thinks that having a rec center would benefit our community, and obviously ninety-six percent said yes, and four percent said no. And this is from out of town, and then...
So, um, this is the resources we would want, uh, forty-one percent said basketball, and thirty-six percent said fitness, so those are the, definitely the major ones. And this is all out of town also, we also did the, uh, survey at the regional basketball tournament for one-eight-two-eight, so... All right, um, this is our survey section where we asked if their children under sixteen would use the facility, and forty percent said yes, and sixty percent said no.
Most of these who said no were people, um, like... Well, we aren't, like, the people who said no were the people who either didn't have siblings, or didn't have children, so, some of them were the younger group of people at the one-eight-two-eight basketball tournament. And a lot of the people that said no too also had, like, grandchildren, and so they didn't technically say yes for kids, but they did write notes on their paper, and they were like, no, but we do have grandchildren that would benefit from this, so even the ones that did say no were really, like, interested in it, just didn't check yes technically. So for the people, um, of Riverton, we just wanted to see how many of them were, actually lived in the city, and who weren't, so it wasn't exactly fifty-fifty, but it was close.
Okay, so, this is basically the same thing, except the people of Riverton, again, most people said that they would use, um, uh, basketball courts, and, oh, a fitness room, too, so, I mean, once again, that would be the, one of the main resources they would use, so... Oh, and a dance studio. And we also did the sixteen and under question, asking if they had any youth that would use it, that were under that age, uh, thirty-eight percent said no, and sixty-two percent said yes.
Um, this question we just asked if they would be, um, willing to pay a tax for this, and ninety-six percent yet said yes, and four percent said no, so that's pretty good, and that's also the people of Riverton. Um, for the people who would be willing to pay a tax, we asked what, um, amount they would be willing to, and most of them said one percent, because they said that we wouldn't, we wouldn't need any more than that, and, um, but most, everyone that said they wanted one, said that they would pay for one.
Okay, so these are the additional comments that were left on there.
Just read some of them.
Okay, so this one says, I lived in other commu- communities with rec centers, I believe they enhance the community and bring families into the community with young children. A fee for service is mandatory for a functioning facility, and people don't have a problem paying for a service they will use. Another said, um, a rec center is needed, but our city population is too old to support the tax. And then another one says, our community needs somewhere for our children to go play and be active, not just a skate park, invest in the youth.
So people were talking about the skate park that was previously talked about, and, um, people think that a skate park is not something that every person, or every child could go to, like, I don't think any of us are skateboarding people, so we need somewhere that we can go that's safe, and like, our parents know that we'll be okay at, and that we're not getting into bad things at. And also that has a variety, because we work, the kids try to work so hard for a skate park, but like Macy said, not all of us kids could use a skate park, so if we had a rec center, there would be like tons of different things for the parents to do while the kids were doing stuff, or like vice versa. Um, so this is just our conclusion of everything, we say that a rec center is not only wanted, but needed for our youth, and for, um, our, the older generation as well, they could use it as well as the youth could. Um, community members are willing to pay for the rec center, and a rec center would have many uses, including, but not limited to sports. So like meeting rooms, you said, if a company needs a meeting room, they could come in and use it as well, it wouldn't just be like basketball courts, or a wrestling room, it would be everything, and our cheerleaders also need somewhere to practice with, because they are currently in our high school, and that doesn't really get anything accomplished, so it would help for them, our wrestlers could have somewhere where they could go to every day and not have to move for things, it's safer for them. It's safer for them. Basketball courts, we wouldn't have to move, um, like we have early and late practice for boys and girls and that's hard and it would just be so much easier if we all had one local place that we could go to. That's it. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, we appreciate your time this evening. I think we all agree that a rec center would be a wonderful thing for our community and I think we keep talking about it and working towards it, at some point in time it will happen. But, uh, I don't know, it's something we've been struggling with for a long time. Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, anyone else in the community that wants to address the council? Okay, at this time, um, would the city clerk please read the consent agenda items by title?
Yes, your honor. Approval of the minutes May sixth, two thousand fourteen, regular council meeting. Approval of the minutes May thirteenth, two thousand fourteen, council work session. Approval of the minutes May nineteenth, two thousand fourteen, finance committee meeting. Approval of finance committee recommendations for May nineteenth, two thousand fourteen. And approval of municipal court report for the month of April, two thousand fourteen.
Okay.
Your honor.
Yes, Councilman Smith.
It's the recommendation of the finance committee for the approval of claims to be paid in the amount of six hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-two cents. Manual, manual checks in the amount of seven hundred and fifty dollars. Ealing credit card in the amount of five thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. Checks written for payroll liabilities for May first, two thousand fourteen in the amount of five hundred and eight thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-one cents for a total of one million, one hundred and eighty-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty cents.
Thank you. The chair would entertain a motion regarding the consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved in second, it is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Uh, agenda item number eight, retirement recognition for Mr. Anderson, Clyde Anderson. Would you please step forward? You're on the hot seat, Clyde. It's taken you a number of years to get here.
Clyde has been a wonderful asset to the city of Riverton. When he joined staff, he was originally, uh, almost twelve years ago, he worked under the direction of the Public Services Department and now he's under the Community Development Department. Clyde's job and his abilities have been very diverse. He worked in the office with AutoCAD and in the field utilizing GIS. He was also responsible for utility inspections, curb and gutter and sidewalk inspections, mapping for utilities, mapping for zoning, plats and replats, mapping for annexations and city limit boundaries, mapping information required by the county, state and federal census. He answered many questions, um, by residents, developers and contractors about sewer and water locations and stormwater locations. He also printed posters, uh, of the council goal each year and made maps of the ward boundaries for campaign and voting purposes. Um, and as most of our employment contracts say, other duties as assigned. Last year, he helped decorate and drove a float, which was really a razor, uh, in the fair parade as part of the city entry. And one item that we can't forget is Clyde was also tasked with the coordination of our SLIP program, which was our sewer lateral protection program. It takes a special kind of person to watch those videos and then to deal with customers and contractors, usually on an emergency basis. When people's toilets, uh, won't flush, they tend to get a little bit cranky. But Clyde did what he needed to be done and usually with a smile. Uh, Christie and Dave, uh, from our department have worked with Clyde since he began working here almost twelve years ago and we all agree that he's been great to work with. He has an easygoing personality and always tried to do what was asked of him. I know he loved working for the city and he was a very dedicated employee. We already miss him and it's only been two days. Uh, but Clyde, we do wish you all the best and we want you to enjoy yourself. Don't worry about us, we'll get along, maybe. And, uh, you deserve it. And I think Christie has a little bit of something too that we wanted to, wanted to do before we give you this.
Oh.
And I'm also, we're also presenting Clyde with a, uh, watch. Uh, it's got the, uh, bucking bronco on it and it says Clyde Anderson, engineering tech, uh, from, uh, October seventh of two thousand two to, uh, uh, what is this? May sixteenth of two thousand fourteen, city of Riverton. So, wonderful.
Thank you, Clyde, for all your service. It's really tough to, to lose the employees that we're losing and it seems like this year's been an especially bad year for us with, um, you know, Paul Throckmorton leaving and then Bill leaving and now Clyde leaving. And so we're glad to see that you're leaving under happier circumstances and you can go out and do some fishing and enjoy your retirement, Clyde, so. But, uh, you certainly earned it and thank you again, we really appreciate it. Okay, um, at this time, we have agenda item number eight, uh, or I'm sorry, nine, replat of Buffalo subdivision. Community development directors' report, please.
Thank you, your honor. This is a replat of the Buffalo subdivision and it's, uh, located north of Sunset Avenue and west of J.C. Park. This parcel was originally platted into two lots in two thousand eleven with lot one zoned B residential and lot two zoned commercial C one. The petitioners, B, B and C Enterprises, wished to replat these two lots to create access, um, to the new lot, one A from West Sunset Drive. Um, the petitioners feel that this additional access would be more practical in order to develop or market this parcel. And this is just an additional, um, access, sixty foot wide on the, uh, east side of that plat. You'll notice from the maps. There are easements, uh, consisting ten-foot utility drainage and irrigation easement between lot one A and lot two A, a thirty-five-foot utility drainage and irrigation easement on the south side of lot two A and a fifteen-foot utility drainage and irrigation easement on the east side of lot one A. No comments were received from utility companies when this plat was reviewed in two thousand and eleven and reviews were sent to utility, utility companies, this time too with no conflicts, uh, received. The planning commission did recommend approval of this replat on May eighth with the stipulation that the southeasterly sixty-foot wide section and northwesterly sixty-foot wide section, uh, of the proposed lot one A, which is the area, the lake that go, one that goes to Sunset and the one that goes to Petersdorff, um, that they be designated as an access easement. This is now shown on the revised plat. And so your alternatives is to approve the replat as originally presented or with, uh, the recommended stipulation. And I believe there's some people that would like to address that, your honor.
Okay, uh, the chair would entertain a motion regarding the replat of Buffalo subdivision at this time?
Your honor, I would move to approve the originally submitted replat without the modifications for the planning commission.
Second.
It's been moved in second, it, uh, is there discussion? This time, if you would like to address the council? So if, if.
You are.
Yes. If, if we approve that motion, whether and that's, if you would like to speak on behalf of it, now would be a time to, to do that and why you're wanting to do it, Rick. And I did promise Joe that she could speak, so.
She, uh, we drew straws and I got the short straw tonight, so.
Your, your honor.
You drew the shirt, I'm sorry.
Um, just really quickly, I'd like to say that I did have opportunity to speak with Josephine prior to the meeting and, um, I am certain that the information she, that they're about to put forth is the same information that I also received, so, in the interest of full disclosure.
Good evening, Mayor Wermuth and, uh, fellow council members. Uh, as most of you know, my name is Rick Gilpatrick and I am here representing B and C tonight. What were proposed, earlier proposed was, first of all, there's three documents that Joe handed out. The first one here is, uh, exhibit number one. It's the, uh, copy of the major streets and, and planning of, uh, of Riverton. And there's an arrow drawn to the piece of property in question, which, as you look at that, there's no, there, it, it appears that there's no future roads or anything to be developed in that area, uh, just with Petersdorff and majors on both sides of that. So I just wanted to bring that to everybody's attention that as far as we know and what we can see here from your website, there was never any roadways proposed through that piece of property. Exhibit number two is what the, uh, is what the, uh, planning commission had proposed, uh, with amendments to our proposal. If you notice the circled, uh, yellow areas there, um, it, it shows that Fremont County reserved a sixty-foot wide strip of land across the city Riverton property for utility and access purposes and an orderly extension of Petersdorff, which with that there, it, it would provide all kinds of access for utilities and that kind of thing to that piece of property. Exhibit three is what we had proposed and, and I guess, um, we talked about, um, the, the difference is we were, all we wanted to do was move the lot line sixty feet to the west from the east side and provide a, a, an access to lot one A in the back, which is zoned residential B. And to do that, you gotta have access in, out, two ways to meet fire truck and garbage collection and those kinds of things, so, um, that's what we would like to see done. Also, the, uh, fifteen foot wide easement for utilities and drainage and irrigation on the east side would remain there for anybody to access north through that, that, that quarter. And so that pretty much explains, I, I guess what we were, uh, propose, or, uh, against was that the planning commission promotes, proposed, uh, uh, a public easement, which basically, um, with both those sides would create a, a takings without consideration. So, um, we're, we're excited of the, of the motion that Jonathan made because we don't think that that, that's necessary. We just, it, we just need the access for private road into that back property so that it'll enhance the sale of that property down the road.
Another one from Petersdorff, that would be an access road, is that my understanding?
That one would be, is, is still gonna be an access, but not a public access, so.
I see.
Yeah.
So neither, neither of them will be public access, is what I'm hearing?
No, we don't want public access because we, it, because if you do that, it's considered a takings and that's, that's not a legal, legal operation without consideration. So we just want, all we want is we want that six, six, that lot line move sixty feet and the existing exit or entrance off of Petersdorff stays the same as it was before without public access and then also the pri- private entrance from Sunset into the back property.
Okay, is there any other discussion? Does anyone have any questions?
Your honor.
Yes.
Um, for the sake of clarity, um, in having spoke with, uh, Josephine Gilpatrick and, um, looking at this particular instance, I fully agree that the city never set forth the idea of having public roads go through that property and I do not feel that it's, uh, is appropriate to force landowners to give easements away that aren't in our plan ahead of time. That's why it's so important that we look at those plans and make those plans. So that is why I made the motion the way I did, thank you.
Okay. Is there anyone from the planning commission here, uh, Ms. Lures that would want to speak on behalf of the planning commission or? I, I, I feel a little uncomfortable when we have a, a planning commission that, you know, that look at issues and make a recommendation and whatnot and then, um...
Totally ignore it.
And then totally ignore it, yes. If you could, please.
The, uh, a decision tonight would, is, you know, paramount for us because we have, uh, a contract under purchase for the front lot two A that will close this week and, um, so we're in agreement with the, with the motion from Jonathan. So, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you very much, Rick, we appreciate, uh, your and Josephine coming this evening. Is there any other comments that any council would like to make before we vote on? Okay, it's been moved in second to, um, uh, would, would the clerk please read back the motion? So that we get that straight.
Your honor, the motion by council member Fabian was to approve the replat without modifications recommended by the planning commission.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, mayor votes aye and motion passes. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Number ten, replat of block one, Ryan Heights addition replat number two, community development directors' report, please.
Your honor. Ryan Heights addition is located just west of school district twenty-five offices on North Fifth. Ryan Heights addition was replatted. Say lot one or lot two, but lot one, Ryan Heights addition, plating it. Fine, but in lot one A, petitioner, our developer would like to add on to one is, after replat, not be able to, at that, it would not be able to build. What Mr. would like to do now is to replat lot 1A and lot three of lot one, also owns lot, is he, is the, in lot one, that with construction of the, onto the existing building, which we recommend.
Okay, thank you. Okay, the chair would entertain a motion regarding this replat?
Your honor, I would move to approve the replat.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in seconded, is there discussion? Okay, all those in favor of the replat signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion passes, mayor votes aye. Okay, agenda item number 11, North Federal Utilities Project Design Consultant Recommendation, interim public services director report, please.
Uh, yes, your honor. YDOT has scheduled the complete reconstruction of, of Federal Boulevard from Napa all the way up to the north boundary of Burger King in, um, in 2017. The city of Riverton has entered into an agreement with YDOT to replace the existing water and sanitary sewer lines below the street. As part of the agreement, the city is responsible for the engineering design fees for the utilities. The city advertised for, uh, for a request for qualifications for firms interested in performing the, the tasks. Six firms submitted, um, statement of qualifications. They were Enberg Miller Engineers, Dow HKM, James Gorzen Associates, Apex, Sage Civil Engineering and Surveying, and HDR. The statement of qualifications were evaluated based on criteria listed in the RFQ and the evaluation committee who consisted of Councilman Richard, um, Rich Guard, Councilman Martin Canaan, um, city administrator Stephen Weaver, um, collection and distribution chief operator Dennis Lawrence, and the construction manager Monte Nordwick. After the rankings were tallied, HDR was ranked the highest. The staff is recommending that the council select HDR as the design consulting firm for this project. The reason we're asking for this now instead of closer to 2017 is YDOT's process, the design process, is a multi-year type process. They have multiple plan submittals and the sooner we can start in on that process, the sooner, the better the design's gonna be.
Okay. I don't disagree at all that they're a multi-year process, so, anyway, it's amazing. That started out that I think they were supposed to be doing, um, North Federal this year, if I remember correctly, and they just keep moving it back, so. Anyway, it is what it is and we just have to deal with it. Okay, the chair would entertain a motion regarding the, uh, recommendation for the North Federal Utilities Project Design Consultant.
Your honor, I'd make the motion for the North Federal Utilities Project Design to be, to be awarded to HDR.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve this recommendation, is there discussion?
Your honor.
Yes.
Refresh my memory, HDR.
Uh, your honor, they used to be Stetson Engineering, um, they're down on Monroe. They were bought out by HDR, which is a national firm.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay. We've got a motion in a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carries. Okay, agenda item number 12, Forest Committee Recommendation Purchase of the Dura Patcher. Interim Public Service Director Report, please.
Yes, your honor. Uh, the Forest Committee has taken a unique approach to the, utilizing the one cent funds. They're, instead of focusing on a particular road or neighborhood, they're focusing on what type of repairs would better, um, get the most bang for the buck and they wanted to look citywide instead of just, um, looking at specific neighborhoods. As part of the education, the staff had several presenters come to the force with more information. There had been several demonstrations of equipment for maintenance purposes presented to the Forest Committee. Discussions at the Forest Committee, um, meetings have centered on fixing the concrete in the streets to prevent water infiltration into this upgrade, which can cause pavement damage. When the YDOT came through last summer to repair the potholes on Main Street and Federal, Forest was interested in seeing a demonstration of that piece of equipment, which were, um, which they, we set up and had on June 29th, 2013. At the time, the city decided to go ahead and rent the, the piece of equipment, which was the Dura Patcher, using city funds as it required less manpower than the crack sealer and provided a better seal for potholes. At the, uh, April 14th, 2014 meeting, Forest, um, commented that the Dura Patcher had worked very well on the streets and discussed purchasing that equipment. They felt that if the one, additional one cent was not renewed, this piece of equipment be, could be used to continue to preserve the streets. Forest asked staff to get a quote on the Dura Patcher and see if they would apply the rent that we've already paid on the machine to the price. On May 12th, 2014, Forest recommended to the council that a new Dura Patcher be purchased for $6,000, $64,150, a savings of $8,000, which was from the past rent. Currently, the one cent is estimated at $1,722,823, with 20, or 20, $32.23. After subtracting the current commitments, the balance was, is $329,978.23. The scur, the city is currently receiving about $150,000 per month in revenue. There are a couple of alternatives. The Forest Committee did recommend the purchase of a new piece of machinery, which was the $64,150. The, um, supplier also quoted for the purchasing, the one that we used last summer and that they were gonna apply 50% of the rent rather than 20% of the rent and that would have been the used Dura Patches, um, $42,200 and, um...
Okay, thank you very much, Don. I've, um, struggled with this one a little bit internally and whenever I do that, why, I write epistles to myself, some of them make it into the, um, uh, public sector and, but many of them don't, but it just helps my clarifying, my thinking, you know, on issues like this that are really important to the community. I sat down with Chairman Manca and had about an hour visit with him on this issue. We've just had a discussion over in Lander, uh, with the, uh, FCAG members over there and so with that as a little bit of a preface, I'd like to read my comments. It's my understanding that the Forest Committee is going to be recommending that we, uh, set this back and give a little bit more time, is that my understanding so? But let me just read this so that you know where, what I'm thinking and, um, it says the citizens of Fremont County have given to the cities and county a great gift. That gift is their trust. They have trusted the city of Riverton with about $1.7 million in their taxes per year with the pledge that this money was to be used to fix our roads, uh, infrastructure to the roads and bridges. This contract was spelled out on the ballot initiative and they approved and in my mind, anything that can be seen as straying away from that commitment jeopardizes that pledge. I'm worried that the purchase of the Dura Patch equipment will be seen by some as straying away from the commitment, even though a strong invalid case is being made by our 1% committee for this equipment to help with that work. I personally agree and support this request, but I cannot in good conscience vote to approve it without the approval of my fellow FCAG members. With that concern in mind, I brought this issue up at a recent meeting of FCAG in Lander. It seemed to be the consensus of the members that the risk was not worth the purchase and while a formal vote was not taken, I feel that it would have failed. The members were interested in perhaps purchasing this equipment through FCAG and using it with all members as a possibility. Is that a fair evaluation of that?
Yes, your honor.
Meeting, uh, Mr. Weaver, uh, Stephen was at the meeting as well and where it was discussed, so. Uh, if it were not for the help of all the other communities in the county and their leaders, we would not have been successful in passing this 1% optional tax. I cannot, even though I feel it is a good and reasonable request, jeopardize this valuable and precious gift that they also share. We were successful together and I feel we must be on the same page as we move forward with this work. Considering their feelings on this issue, I cannot vote to approve this purchase. There are short-sighted citizens that were not supportive of this tax and it only passed by a very slim margin. If they can make the case in 2016 that we are abusing this gift, then we will lose that much-needed revenue stream for the future that is based on their trust. This roadwork that we are now able to do is such a blessing to our community, but with 69 miles of road, we will only scratch the surface of the needs with the estimated $7 million income that it will bring in, in this four years to Riverton. It is critical that we protect this gift. I would therefore ask the council that this request be denied and CFFCA can come up with a plan to purchase this needed equipment. That last comment was before I knew that, uh, the Forest was wanting to set it back, but that's just my feelings on it. I think that, that we've been given this great gift for our community, the entire county and, um, I've given the county commissioners a lot of heartburn over their purchase of snow fence, okay? And, uh, Commissioner Thompson and Commissioner Becker and I have gone round and round on that one. And, um, in our discussion, it was interesting that, that Commissioner Becker was able to see and basically was opposed, I believe, to the purchase of this equipment because of that concern and yet he was not able to see how the, the purchase of snow fence could also jeopardize it. So, anyway, it's, it's one of these things that in 2016, we'll all be fishing on a stream someplace and so another mayor will be having to deal with this problem, but it is such a blessing to our community now that I just really would hate to, hate to jeopardize it. Yes, Chairman, uh, Manca, would you like to address, please?
I'm Wendell Manca, I'm chairman of the one cent committee and, uh, you all have to understand that I, I've been riding, uh, both sides of the fence on this issue. Uh, I was probably one of the leading people in the community that went after the mayor every chance I had about guarantees where this money was gonna be spent. Uh, we've seen too much in the past of it's, oh yeah, with this, what we're gonna do with it, but it all seems to go somewhere else, so. I, I used a, a lot of influence, I talked to a lot of people and said, every time you see the mayor, you asking this, what guarantees do we have? And now I'm sitting here leading the charge to wanna spend it on a piece of equipment. So it's a little tough issue, but we, the committee has really looked at the work that this machine did last, uh, fall and what we're seeing now, how it's holding up, if you watch this thing work, it's just amazing piece of equipment. It's, it's a new generation of Patcher. But we do not wanna jeopardize this money. There's just no way we can walk out on that limb. So, I'm gonna stand up as chairman and ask the, the council to delay any vote on this, to table it until the mayor and I can meet with some of these people and, and see if we can get a better understanding because we don't wanna, we don't wanna burn our bridges here. This, this is too important to us. Uh, we have another major, major project coming up just in weeks, so we're gonna be close to $2 million under, under contract just very shortly. So we can't lose this money, we've gotta keep going with it, so. Let's not burn any bridges here, we appreciate your, your support, what you're allowing us to do, but I'm asking you to, to table it until we can get a better consensus on where we're at.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Wendell. Yes?
Can I ask a question? What is the advantage purchase over renting if the mach, equipment is the same?
Could you come up to the microphone, please, Wendell?
For $64,000, we get a brand-new machine that's got lots of warranties on it and we'll have it forever. Instead of having to keep paying a rental on it, you know, the $4,000 a month, it doesn't take long, it, it adds up in a big hurry.
Well, it's true, but we don't do, do a lot of patching in November through January either.
Uh, of course, if, the thing of it is, it makes it so ideal that whenever, uh, Greg has people that aren't super busy, he can pull two, three people off and put this thing to work. Two, three people do the work what five people used to do with this thing.
Any time of year?
Uh, the, the real cold months, no, it's not gonna work. It also can be used for, for, uh, crack sealing, so there's a lot of work this thing can do and it's really holding up well.
Now, do, when we repair roads in Lander or Hudson or wherever this goes, would that same equipment be used there?
Well, if we work out an agreement that, which the, the mayor and, uh, has talked about, we would have to work out some kind of an agreement that if we own this machine, you know, costs and all these kind of things would all have to be negotiated and worked out so that we're, we're not just wearing out our machine doing somebody else's work for them. Because if we're gonna take our employees and our oil and our gravel, somebody's gotta pay for it if we're doing somebody else's work, so that, they'll, issues that have to be worked out before we could do anything like that. Uh, one of the things that, uh, uh, one of the people that I visit with is if we get a strong, strong program, which I have visited with Greg about, is in the spring, we have a massive effort of going, covering the whole town and patching every hole in town. And then make sure that we patch everything as we go through the summer and then when we come to fall, make a massive effort to stop again, to make sure we get everything. Because we're gonna overlay a lot of streets, we're not gonna even start to cover them all. So this, this is a good way to, to preserve what we have. You know, we're gonna get this concrete work done and stop the leakage of water underneath the, the oil, so then we can start saving these streets and this thing is a, is a good tool to help save them.
Thank you.
Your honor?
Yes, Councilman Garden.
I've had three real negative comments about the, the patching machine and I would need to be educated to the fact of why you think it's a really good, uh, pothole patcher.
Well, in first place, it takes less labor to do it and it's, it's so fast. Uh, one of the biggest negative comments that I personally ever received is the gravel residue that we leave. The little, the smaller gravel is left there and part of that has, it has to be there because you're putting down gravel that is coated with oil. Basically what you do when you go up, you find a hole, you take this large handle and you blow it all out, get it real clean. And then we spray good oil all the way around it with an overlap. Then you turn the lever and then you're putting the rock in that is coated with the oil and you lay it back and forth in layers and just build it up. You know, some of the first couple patches that, that the city employees did, a little trouble here and there, you know, one of them was a little high and one was a little low, but the last patches they've been doing with it are very, very good. And then as you're finishing getting it up to a finish, you turn the oil off and you put the dry rock over the top of it so that it seals it up and the cars don't pick it up. When the cars drive over, they're not picking up any oil. Uh, I went around on several different patches, at least twice a day for a week and they're not picking up any oil from it. You know, I'll pick up, I don't mind picking up a rock here and there and throwing that a little bit, but I don't wanna pick up oil and throw all over the side of my car and I don't think most people do either. We did a patch back here in this back driveway, about, oh, about size of a bushel basket. It, it's solid, as nice as can be, but right next to it is another pothole. There's, there's several, if you'll go out this back way and go out, you can, you can see that patch over there, it's really holding up. Uh, that's the biggest comment I've heard is, is the lu, the loose gravel. Uh, Greg's done a pretty good job in most areas of getting the sweeper out after a reasonable period of time and, and picking that back up, so. That, that's the only real comments I've heard of it. What, is that kinda where you've been hearing too, or?
Well, yeah, they're, they're negative that we shouldn't be filling potholes with pea gravel and, you know, makes sense to me, if, if we got pea gravel, let's put it in there, but I wanted to hear from an expert, what you thought, what you thought.
It's coated with oil and you lay it in in layers in there and it just builds it right up and makes a solid, uh, hole out of the thing then.
And the patches are holding.
The patches are holding.
Okay.
Uh, Greg, I, I haven't heard of any of, of failures, have you seen any failures of the patches that we've done? The, the first year, we had a couple, but what, what we've done since then were pretty solid. Uh, one of the biggest com, nasty comments I heard was the, the big white cracks that we had in, uh, Sunset right there by the UPS building. And we had a couple people just plumb nasty about that. You should've just left it there, it was better off then, well, you can go up there now and you can't even find the, the, where we patched it, pretty well gone. And it's, there's no crack.
Thank you. Councilman Fabian, your honor.
Um, I was, I was just curious, is there any, um, information on how it holds up through winter and snowplows and that sort of thing? Is it something that withstands or?
What we did last, the, last fall held up all winter here. So we were, you know, real big failure there. I don't see where it'd be a problem, the way it's done. It, it's gotta be a solid or solider than putting coal patch in it, that's for sure. And that's how you used to do it all with coal patch.
Thank you. Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Garden?
We actually lived before we had the one cent, didn't we? And so, can't we find a, a fund that doesn't attach to the one cent to purchase equipment out of?
Your Honor, yeah, I mean, that's, that's a capital purchase, and that's something that, maybe not in this fiscal year, but in the, in future.
I think that was the discussion that we had when we were talking about FCA. They, they all see the benefit of it too, and we're very excited about the possibility of getting it into their communities as well. And they suggested spontaneously that they come together and try to generate enough funds so that they can purchase it, and it would be owned by FCA and then used by the members. If we did that, why, we obviously would lose a lot of time that we need it, and with sixty-nine miles of road, we certainly have need for one here. But they also felt that to use one percent money could potentially jeopardize that, that revenue stream, and, and they just hated to see that as a possibility. But I don't think any of us are opposed to the machine. Any of us are opposed to the efficacy of, of using it and the savings, the economy and everything. I think it's a smart way to go. But when, when we were able to pass this with a four-hundred vote margin, we come around next time, and we're buying snow fences and heavy equipment and da-da-da-da-da, it's going to get a little bit dicey. And so, that worries me, but I guess what I would prefer, rather than tabling this, would be to withdraw the motion. Would that be reasonable to, to do? If we table it, then we would need to, to bring it up for action.
I have a motion.
Oh, I thought we had a motion on it.
No motion yet.
I haven't made a motion yet, Your Honor. We've got three before us.
I thought, I thought that we-
One, two, or three. No, you read your-
I thought that we did have a motion on that. Okay? I'm corrected then.
Your Honor, could we have a breakdown on the, on the monthly rent on the machine? Is it four thousand dollars a month when it's in use?
And that, that's the-
Your Honor, yes, it's four thousand dollars a month for the machine itself.
And that is not one percent money that's being used, is my understanding?
What we've, what we've, Your Honor, what we've spent so far was not one cent, no.
Okay.
It's plus materials, oil and, and rock.
And do you have an estimate of what it would take? I mean, is it going to, is it going to work around the clock? Is it going to, how long is it going to take to do the potholes?
I really couldn't tell you just how much time is actually going to be spent.
Yeah. So, maybe we could get an estimate of, of how many months that it would be in use, and to be real truthful, Councilman Larson's idea is not a bad one if it isn't, if it isn't month after month. If it's month after month, rent is a foolish move. We should own the equipment instead of pay the rent. But if we can, if we get our work done in four months or three months, then why, why own it, why pay the lease on it for twelve months? Um, yeah. That's not a bad idea, and if we could work that out, and there should be some joint funds there, I, I would think, if we really go for the purchase. But we ought to have those numbers to see if the, if the use of the equipment, if we could get it done in, in two months compared to if we need it for nine months. We need it for nine months, and then we, and we need it, and we don't, we don't have time to share it, then I think that, I don't share my pickup truck. I use it every day. I share my wife's car. It's just the way it is. When she says I can use it, so.
Yes, Councilman Larson? All I, all I know is that-
I agree with your snow fans. I really do.
Well, see, that's the difference, and yet I had members of the land, of the county one percent committee that called me up and expressed in very direct language that I needed to mind my own business, that how they spent their money was their business, not mine. And you go down that road a ways, and-
You don't have any friends.
Well, it's, you know, and, and it's, I, I don't, I, I mean, you don't have to sell me on it, it's a good project, but in the county, in order to pass this one percent tax, we said that it would be used for roads, curbs and gutters, basically, infrastructure and bridges. And that's all.
Yep.
It didn't say anything about buying heavy equipment for the city. It didn't say anything about buying snow fences, da-da-da-da. And so, that's where my concern is, when you stray away from that, that potentially will come back and bite us, because there was a lot of people that was not supportive of this one percent tax, okay?
Well, Your Honor, when you're-
Anyway, that's-
When we're talking paving equipment, I think we have some real experts in the room. Sixty-four thousand dollars is not even the tailgate on most equipment per, per patch.
And I don't think it's the dollar amount.
And, and that's where I, that's where I'm at. I think that we ought to look at other funds, and if we can, really do need it, if it really would be busy year-round or a good portion of the year, we should purchase this piece of equipment. We purchased, we purchased equipment before we had the one cent.
I agree.
And, and so, if it's a piece of equipment that really does pay for itself, we ought to look at that really hard. We ought to also have, I don't know how we could do it, but if we could show that product to the public in a positive light, that what it's doing and how it's holding up, maybe we could even put some signage up, that we filled these potholes nine months ago and they're still good. And, you know, instead of taking the, the negative all the time on putting pea gravel in, in what somebody wants boulders, I suppose.
Yeah.
You know, I don't, I don't understand that logic, and, and all I'm trying to say is, the more we get educated, the more I understand that I can, I can discuss back. And I think we should be able to purchase equipment without going into the one cent funds we have in the past, and we ought to look at that before we look at the one cent monies. And, and once we, once we make that determination, I would like to see if it truly is going to be used around the clock, or if, or if we get our work done in three months. Councilman Larson is correct. Why, why own something that we could rent and store for nine months that's not in use?
I remember when we bought the tub grinder, why, we leased it out to other communities and whatnot, to the Solid Waste District and whatnot for their use as well. So, there certainly wouldn't be any reason why we couldn't. I don't know that it would be a money-making project, but it's certainly a consideration.
Your Honor?
Yes?
I guess, I actually talked to a few people about this whole thing, and in the end, I think it does come down to perception is reality, and if people perceive that we're not spending the one cent funds on what we said we would, regardless of the fact that if I go hire somebody to fill my pothole, they're probably going to use that same piece of equipment to do it, and they're going to bill me for the equipment and the man-hours and everything else, and mark it all up. Perception is reality, and I, I agree. I don't think we can go there right now. I really don't, unless we're going to engage in some sort of a marketing campaign to change public perception. That's pretty much the only way we can do it, so, thank you.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion to table twelve.
Okay. For a second? It's been moved in second to table the force committee recommendation. Although in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carries. Mayor votes aye. Okay, agenda item number thirteen, board appointments, planning commission and tree board. Community development director's report, please. Okay, thank you. The chair would entertain a motion regarding these board appointments.
Your Honor, I would move to approve the appointment of the two planning commission members, or the reappointment of the two planning commission members and the appointment of Aaron Justice to the tree board position.
It's been moved in second. Is there discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose, same sign, motion carries. Mayor votes aye. Okay, agenda item number fourteen, sanitation services. Enter and public services director report, please.
Yes, Your Honor. The city provide, currently provides sanitation services to all residents of the city per municipal code eight twelve. In the early nineteen eighties, the city dump was closed and all garbage was taken to the Fremont County Solid Waste Disposal District landfill. The city was informed by the district that in, on, on April seventh, two thousand fourteen, that the board had authorized an efficiency study, and one of the recommendations was to reduce the hours at their facilities of oper- where the staff attended their board meeting on April twenty-first, two thousand fourteen, where it was approved to reduce the hours of operation at the Riverton Baylor facility and the Sandra landfill from a seven-day-a-week operation to a five-day-a-week, which would be Tuesday through Saturday. And the hours would be eight to five, beginning July first. I actually had handed you out a brochure that the Solid Waste District is, is passing out to people. This will impact the city's operation for sanitation services. The Solid Waste Board will work with the city as we make changes to our program to adhere to this new change, and per DEQ, the Baylor building cannot, has to be free of garbage at the end of the day. So, we cannot dump something there and have it lay on the taping floor for them to bail the next day. Currently, the city collects sanitation from residents on a Monday through Friday and commercial Monday through Saturday. There are currently less than twenty commercial accounts that are picked up on a six-day-a-week schedule. The rest of the commercial accounts are picked up anywhere from once a week to five days a week. Staff will notify these accounts about the upcoming changes and encourage them to find ways to reduce their garbage or provide an extra container from at their current rate, at our current rates. As for residential pickup, staff sees this as an opportunity to create efficiencies within our own service as well. Several years ago, the city purchased two new sanitation trucks equipped with a grabber arm. These trucks allow the city to collect trash at a faster rate than our older trucks. It currently takes the sanitation driver ten seconds to pick up and dump a container with a new one, and three minutes to dump a container with the older trucks. Currently, these trucks are being underutilized. Of the three thousand five hundred ninety-eight resident accounts, there are only eight hundred and thirty-seven that use alley containers, while the two thousand seven hundred sixty-one use rollouts. That is less than twenty percent on the alley containers. And I've listed an attachment that kind of summarizes if we were able to go to a four-day-a-week operation, or if we, if we needed to stay on a five. And basically, staff is just looking for direction on how the council feels we should implement these changes that are being handed down to us by the closure or the reduced hours of operation.
Your Honor?
Yes, councilman.
Would there be any impact on a four-day versus currently five? Would we-
On the four-day, what we would have to do, we could not, with the certain, the containers as they are, as they stand now, we could not reduce our operations to a four-day operation. We would need to change the residence all to a rollout instead of the alley dumpsters. And if we were able to do that, like I said, it takes the new trucks ten seconds to dump a container where it takes three minutes. And I did a calculation, and of the eight hundred and thirty-seven that use alleys, if the newer truck was dumping that, that's eight hours. Eight hours in, what, forty minutes? If the, if it was at the older trucks that, that take three minutes, it is about twenty hours for two trucks. So, there's efficiency of time. We can't absorb those eight hundred and thirty-seven can alley dumpsters in our schedule as it stands now and reduce it down to a three-day, a four-day-a-week operation.
But if we changed them over to a rollout?
Correct.
Are, are most of the alley commercial, or are, are they all residential?
Well, the eight hundred and thirty-seven are the residential alley dumpsters. The commercial obviously would stay commercial, would stay alley dumpsters that, the commercial that have alley dumpsters would stay that.
But that wouldn't affect us, though.
That wouldn't, well, it does, because we collect that commercial, Your Honor, sorry. But we can, like I said, there's less than twenty commercial accounts that are picked up on a six-day-a-week. We currently have our commercial driver working on Saturday to collect those, because there are, like I said, there are some commercial accounts that are picked up a six-day. We'll have to reduce that to a five-day, so they would, we would still be working on a Saturday with that one driver. But if we had to incorporate in the residents on a Saturday pickup, then all three drivers would be picking up. We, some of our trucks are older, so we would have to have a mechanic on call just in case they broke down and we needed to do that, you know?
Would we need to purchase additional rollouts for this conversion?
Yes, Your Honor, we would have to purchase additional rollouts, but that would be the only equipment we would have to purchase.
So, is it a, is it a fifty-fifty break, or would it be wise to go to the four-day? I know during holidays, they appear, it appears magically that all happens within that holiday period. It, it, I don't know how it happens, but it just-
Reindeer.
Right, right moon is out or something, because we get all of that picked up in that shorter period of time.
Your Honor, on the, on the four-day, one, one idea that we've floated is that we would be able to use those sanitation people on Monday to do other projects around the city. And so, this really is an efficiency model that, that if we went to four-day on Monday, we'd be able to use them on other projects, and then they would go pick up Tuesday through Friday. But, but we would have to convert all to the rollouts instead of, well, except the commercial. But if, if we keep with the alley dumpsters, then we'd have to move the Tuesday through Saturday, and, and there's some other concerns with that.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Garden?
How many people per container? How, how many residents per container? They're not one-to-one like the rollouts are.
Uh, Your Honor, that eight hundred and thirty-seven is not containers, that is accounts.
That's accounts, too, though.
Yeah, so that's a people.
So, how many containers are there?
So, that would be, so they're typically broken down, Your Honor, to a four, four people per container.
Four people, okay.
Four residents, I should say.
So, we're still way ahead to ten seconds. We're into forty seconds compared to three.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Fabian?
Um, is the sanitation fund in a place to be able to go ahead and get those rollouts financially?
Your Honor, as this is not happening until July first, like I said, the Solid Waste District has said that we would give you guys time to, give the city time to change our operations, so we do have it currently budgeted to purchase those additional rollouts in the next budget year, and-
Is that a yes or a no?
Yes, Your Honor, that, yes, that is a, the sanitation fund does have the reserves to do that.
Your Honor?
Yes, Councilman Garden?
Don't I understand that we have a lot of the smaller containers that we didn't get into the, into use?
Yes, Your Honor, that is correct. We do have still a lot of forty-five gallon containers.
So, maybe we need to take another look at that and see if we could put those into use. use somehow, entice folks into that 25 gallon container to diminish the cost to go to the bigger container. So there's ways, there's ways to save some money there. And we've already purchased those. I believe we have a considerable number of those left on hand. Thank you, your honor.
Any other comments anyone have, like to make?
Your honor.
Yes.
It looks like from the information that we've been given that, that, you know, the cost of the containers is going to be offset by employee or personnel costs. So it looks like the four day a week operations is the best financially for the city to move in that direction. So.
This, this is something that I've not hidden at all my feelings on this issue. I'm opposed to going to the rollouts personally. We've had the large dumpsters in our alleys since we purchased our home in 71. And the, I, I don't disagree that there's a certain amount of efficiency that may be gained. It's my understanding that you would still have to have one of the older trucks if you're picking up commercial with the, what is it, three yard dumpsters, I think they are.
Yes, your honor.
So you would still have to have that type of equipment out there. And most of the new developments that are coming along, they don't have alleys. So it seems like having an alley is a, for people that have them, I think they really enjoy them. I certainly do. I do have, spend half my life in the alley. I can't imagine not having one. But at any rate, part of the other argument, Mr. Urbikite and I used to go round and round on this years ago. And the argument was that many people that come in from the county will drive through our alleys and just throw their garbage into our, our garbage cans. And so we get then to, to pay for that. If you take that dumpster away from the individuals and give them a rollout that's in their garage, then people won't be putting their garbage in. So you won't have those theft of services. I understand that side of it. But once again, where will these people be putting their garbage? And I think that, given the quality of people that will do that, you'll find more garbage, you know, throughout our community. And it will become trashier than what we, we have a problem with now. And so that is a little bit of an escape valve, even though it's costing the city, you know, to do it. But the other thing is the yard waste are large, we've got, I think, two or three of those large yard waste rollouts. Had a lady call me up and she was very upset that she was given a small rollout to do her yard waste. And she says, I can't get all my grass clippings in that little container, where she had been putting it into a larger container. So then she had to adjust, you know, to that smaller container. So it's these kinds of things that, and yet it's hard to argue against three seconds versus three minutes or whatever it is. You know, we all, we all can recognize that. But I, I personally think we're giving up a lot by going that direction. If we were able to change everything over so that you didn't have to have any trucks to pick up the larger containers, then you would say, well, that's a dinosaur, get rid of it. But if we're going to continue to pick up commercial using the same old equipment, well, then it's, it becomes less valid in my mind. But I drive up and down the streets when they're picking up the rollouts and everybody has their rollouts on. And if it's a nice windy day, part of them are blown all over up and down the street. And they just, they, they don't give a very attractive look to our community. And we have problems in that area anyway. So I personally would like to see us leave the alley containers the way that they are. But I don't know.
Your honor.
Yes.
One question I have. If we went to the four day a week, would any city employees lose time?
No, we could.
Your honor, no.
No, okay.
Like Stephen Stitt suggested, we would be utilizing those, those employees on Monday for other tasks.
Okay, all right.
The, the other thing that's a little bit frustrating about this, we just had an FCAAG meeting the other night. Andy Frye, the executive director of the solid waste district was there telling us about these changes. Well, this is a nine-member board that the solid waste has. The city of Riverton spends $60,000 a month putting our garbage into the solid waste stream, and we have zero representation on that board. They didn't have the courtesy to come before the council in a work session or in open session like this and discuss these changes with us. They just say, here's the changes. We'll be making these changes in the near future. Figure out how you're going to deal with them. And I recall one of the, the solid waste member boards making the comment one time that Riverton is the cash cow for the solid waste district. Well, that, you know, goes down just a little bit rough for me personally. But anyway, other than that, I don't have any feelings on it.
Your honor.
Yes, Councilman Fabian.
As far as collection goes, then is each, is the poundage of each resident kind of weighed out? And are they billed based on that one rollout? Or how is that? Or is it just averaged out?
Your, your honor, right now, our, our trucks are not equipped with scales. So your, the sanitation rates are based on the size of your container.
Well, your honor, it's, it's number of containers. You've got two containers and a grass clipping container. Your fee is different than if you have one.
It's based on the number of containers you have.
Yes.
That's right.
And the size.
Yeah. And your honor, also with that, there would be a little decrease in revenue to the city in the fact that I believe the, the dumpsters, they, they're charged a higher rate than the rollouts because I think you have more past, I don't know.
I don't know what the cost is, but my tenants hate those back alleys. As soon as they can transfer to a rollout, they do it just as fast as they can.
That's, that's an interesting, I hadn't heard that. Everyone I've talked to that have the, the large containers in the back prefer them. I think sometimes you can have a larger object that you can put in, that if you have a smaller container, you're just stuck with what you got.
Well, I always, I always get a letter of my alley on spruce, and I always look and sure enough, it's somebody else's. You know, we don't have trees that big. We don't have cribs. We don't, you know, jeez. So my son and I get to do that.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Mr. Weaver, do you need a motion on that item?
Yeah, it, some sort of direction from the council would be nice so that we can make sure we either budget that way or, or.
Your honor.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to go to a four day a week operations.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Same sign. Mayor votes aye. Motion passes. Okay, reports and comments. Council committee reports and council member roundtable. Councilman Gard, would you lead off, please?
Thank you, your honor. I was, had the opportunity to attend the per day presentation. It gets better every year. The city employees did a wonderful job putting that on. Rosie slipped the room, but Greg's here. And they've spent a lot of time and effort putting that together. And it went over really well, as, as well attended. The weather was gorgeous. And I just wanted to express my thanks to those city employees that worked so hard on that. Thank you, your honor.
Councilman Canaan.
Uh, nothing, sir.
Okay. Councilman Christensen.
Nothing to report.
Okay. Councilman Fabian.
I believe it's a, I think it's the week, a week from Saturday is the animal shelters' rags to rescue garage sale, something along those lines. You'll have to check the date. It's coming up soon. And if you have an item that you'd like to donate to the shelter, please give the shelter's main number a call. And if needed, they can even make arrangements to come pick it up. There are certain items they won't accept because if they, if they can't sell them, it costs them more to dispose of them than, than it's worth. And that's not a very good fundraiser. Also, preparations are still underway for the upcoming redneck carnival. That's part of the rendezvous car and bike show. That'll be up at CWC. So if you're interested in helping with that, either with a booth or, or anything of that nature, please also contact the animal shelter for that. And I don't have any updates at this time from the Parks and Trails Master Committee. So I guess that's it.
Councilman Gard. Nothing. Okay, all right. City administrators report, please.
Yes, your honor, we're talking about waste. So the solid waste district is having a free e-waste disposal on June 7 from 9 to 3 p.m. That's for residents of Fremont County. And they'll be collecting at the Lander landfill, Riverton bail station, DuBois landfill. And e-waste is like computers, monitors, keyboards, printers. And it looks like you're limited to five per person.
I'm kidding.
Oh, the current cost is what?
Forty cents.
Forty cents a pound. So this is free. So this, you know, take advantage of it. June 7. And then just a reminder that we will have a meeting next Tuesday. Will be our budget work session. We'll start at 6:30 p.m. Come with your questions. You have your workbooks. And if you have any other additional questions you want to ask beforehand, let the staff know and we can help you out with that. It'll be exciting. Thank you.
I've not heard exciting used in a budget session before, but it's an interesting choice of words there. Anyway, thank you, Mr. Weaver. Stephen and I went to Cody Meyer's award bank, or meeting that they had today with Susan Thomas Foundation. And that was a pretty neat award. He's the SRO officer at the middle school. And you could tell that he is well-loved by all of the students up there and the faculty and whatnot. And it was just a wonderful event. So I, I really appreciate the quality of officers that we have in the city. That was, that was pretty neat. Mr. Weaver and I also went over to the county commissioners' chambers the other day, a couple times. It seems like we've been over there dealing with consensus funding. This is the old PIL fundings, the payment in lieu of taxes. Well, they've changed the name on it now to consensus funding, I guess. But, and this is where the state is basically authorizing the counties to get an amount, an amount of money. But the county has to decide how they're going to split it up and which projects are going for where. And they have to meet certain state guidelines. And it's a lot of really boring stuff for me. But we were able to get a little bit of money out of that. And we talked about it in the pre-meeting for just a moment, but I just wanted to, to let the public know that perhaps you, you would like to tell what two items that we're getting money for, Dawn. You've been very involved in that and we appreciate that. That's going to help those projects.
Yes, your honor. The two projects we put in for were the water treatment plant, high-service pumps. Those are the pumps that actually pump water after it's been treated out of our water treatment plant into the tank. And last fall, one of those actually failed at the end. Luckily, it was towards the end of our operating season. So we were able to get it fixed over the winter on a temporary basis. But they're 30 years old and they really truly need replaced. When we replace them, they'll be with a much more efficient pump and a variable pump. So hopefully that'll give some cost, energy cost savings. The second project is our Big Bend Drain Ditch. And that's, it's association with the South Federal Project. Currently, the, the storm water goes down to the river. And this, because of the contributions the city has to the, of the overland storm water to South Federal, the YDOT had to design dual storm drain, storm sewers on both sides of the street. And one is being diverted, it's per our master drainage plan, into the Big Bend Drain Ditch. And that's like just north of Monroe and goes out through the, through the trailer park and then across Smith Road and does that. And we need to basically make improvements to that project to allow it to handle the, the larger flows.
The pumps, we received $131,500. And the Big Bend was $125,000. So it was not an insubstantial amount of money. And it's very helpful to the community. And it's certainly worth our effort to go over and arm wrestle with everybody and trying to get what we can. So at any rate, I just wanted to bring you up to, to speed on that. And other than that, I don't have anything else. Any last minute? No? The chair would, we don't have an executive session this evening. No? Good. We haven't had many of those lately. That's good. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We moved and seconded.